Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. Welcome all of you in attendance at tonight's officially scheduled city council meeting, which we will call to order at 7:01 or 6:01 PM on this, the 22nd of June 2017.
Are we getting any volume?
I tested it out earlier.
Yeah, I think it got a little bit.
I'll make sure, okay.
Not a lot. So, let's proceed with our roll call.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Yes.
He, of course, is excused given his employment in California.
Well, he's planning on participating by phone, so.
Perfect.
And then Leona Sander Hunter.
She's called in and is actually representing the city at tonight's RMSA annual meeting. So she's officially excused.
Okay. And then Mayor Smith.
Also present. So we have a quorum. I would suggest we proceed with our pledge of allegiance and afterwards we'll come to person. So Mr. Schei, would you lead us, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think that it would be appropriate now, as we've done in the past couple of council meetings, to engage in a motion to contact Mr. Parsons, so that we can connect with him telephonic. So I'd await council action on that.
Mayor, we've discussed that we can just do a one-time motion and that will carry through. We did this before when Ms. Costello was to be gone and the council was able to approve her, you know, through one motion and then for the length of time that she was going to be off. You don't have to do it every time. That's up to you guys if you want to work it that way.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. So, I take that into advisement. We proceed with this process.
I'll make a motion to allow Mike Parsons to call in at this and future council meetings.
Please for the phone call.
The city of Vader.
Yeah, illegal.
But we've had a motion submitted to the council to approve the teleconferencing participation of Mr. Parsons. So, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Secuted by Mr. Daley. Now we have an opportunity to provide commentary.
Well, I say that's giving away public funds and completely illegal malfeasance on the mayor's part for allowing that to do that. That's my opinion of it because it costs money. I have to pay money for long-distance calls and that.
Well, with all due respect, I'd be fascinated to see how you could legally claim that it's malfeasance on the mayor's part, but I would certainly love to.
It'd be on me too, because I just approved it too, so.
Exactly, so.
Well, you're not supposed to be giving away government funds.
But since he's a duly-elected city council member and there's nothing illegal about the action, what you're suggesting is that the city council members who have approved it in the past are engaging in some illegal activity. You're tired to say that, but just verbalizing it doesn't mean that it's true. So I guess the council can embrace what you suggested and then have it influence your votes. Any other thoughts or observations?
We did discuss this topic with the city attorney previously and she said that it wasn't an acceptable way for a city council member to participate.
Oh, well, be heard. So our city attorney said it would be okay. If you have an attorney who has another opinion, we probably welcome that perspective. So, any other thoughts or observations? Hearing none, let's put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same side? Okay, we've had two votes to one. That is the majority of the quorum, so the motion carries. So we will proceed with the phone call.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Okay, I hit the wrong number, so pick up the handle. Hang it up again.
Okay.
Push the green button. Dial again, one.
Yeah, technical difficulties.
I wondered if I could.
I was just gonna text him. Answer your phone.
If he called, then it'd be on his dime.
There you go.
True. Well, it's free.
Yeah, it's free, yeah.
Hello? Hello, Mike. This is Ken Smith, the mayor, calling. We've approved your participation tonight and the council actually approved for the next several council meetings in the future.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Can you hear us okay?
Yep.
All right. We have present on the council tonight Joe Schei, Andy Wilson, and Jason Daley. We have one council member missing, so that'd be Leona.
Leona.
So, we have a quorum, so we'll proceed.
Perfect.
We've engaged with the pledge of allegiance and now we're down to the mayor's report.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, I'll start with the mayor's report. We've, I'd like to report that the Fourth of July event is fast approaching and that those involved with it are moving ahead efficiently and effectively. And we think that it's going to be one of the best Fourth of July celebrations that the city has ever hosted. So I'm quite excited about it. We've, we're in the process of ensuring that all the insurances are paid and that the field is manicured well enough, don't burn the city down, I hope. Flyers and other marketing efforts are in full swing. So, any thoughts or questions from the council of the Fourth of July event?
Were we, I know last year we got a big banner to go over 506. Was that able to be put up this year?
It hasn't gone up yet, but do you have a thought on that?
Yes, members of the public have asked if they could put it up. We have located it. I wasn't sure where it was, but it's in the city garage and so they've asked if they can put up the signs around and, as well as the banner. The banner will go across the highway, that takes special permission. We don't have time to do that, but it could go.
On the fence.
On a fence or on someone's property, so.
Permission last year, but we just never got it up. Do we need it again?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okey-dokey.
Do I need, just a question. Do I need to go through Reggie about preparing the site for what we're doing?
Reggie probably is not the individual who's going to be overstaying the site preparation. That would be the Castle Rock School.
Castle Rock, okay.
Yeah. Reggie's concerned about the grass and the height of it, so we're going to be talking to Jim Mabbett, the superintendent, to ensure that the section where the fireworks would go off is cut shorter. But we have enjoyed the participation of our fire district officials at each of our previous events and we will have them on-site as well in the event that something does catch fire.
Which way is he gonna shoot the fireworks up? This way or that way?
I think it's gonna go straight up.
Pretty sure it's gonna go. Reggie's shot fireworks and I wouldn't be shooting them straight up. I'd be shooting them on fire protection license.
Yeah, he does, and he's certified with the level of fireworks that we blast off. These aren't full-size things, but he is fully certified, so we're confident in his abilities. So, okay, and the second item was that, I'll jump down to volunteers for grant funding We're hoping that in the not-too-distant future that we'll have opportunities for, particularly as the new 501(c)(3) organization, the Visions of Vader group gets into full functionality, that we'll be aggressively seeking grant applications. And so we're on the hunt for individuals who may have expertise in that, that skill set. So I'd invite anybody on the council who may be acquainted with individuals who would be willing to volunteer for that service to let us know at City Hall. You know, I believe I have the names of a couple of individuals indicated the willingness to do that, but we'd like to open this up for public participation. So that's what I wanted to bring to your attention. Okay, then the second item I'd now share with you last. This is a response and observations about building code and permit fees. As the mayor, it's my responsibility to apply and enforce building codes that are approved by the city council. It's, and the mayor and the city staff are the ones who are authorized by the city council to engage in the legal research that's appropriate to ensure that those codes and permit fees are legal and reflect the decisions made by the council, if you follow me. It has been interesting to me in the last three or so council meetings that we've had this undercurrent of members of our community who, for whatever reason, seem to feel that our codes and our permit fees are excessive and are creating a negative climate as far as the city's development and growth prospects are. But I must admit, as I am involved on a daily basis with the comings and goings of these permit, the application of these ordinances, which are done by the city council, there are individuals who feel it's appropriate to put a negative connotation on the efforts of the city officials, employees, to apply those permit fees. And that in so doing, that it's driving away individuals who are coming to the city to buy property and build homes on it. And I have decided that those individuals are free to say what it is that they might be thinking, but I think it is incumbent upon the mayor, when there is that sort of negative information being conveyed to the residents and to others outside the city, to counter it with the truth. And I've discovered in the last week or so, that in fact, for the last month, we've had a goodly number of people coming to Vader looking to buy property, doing an analysis of the permit fees, and they're actually not going away with a negative attitude and they're not going away with a negative attitude about our city employees. In fact, it's just the opposite. We had a discussion a couple of council meetings ago about some property in the city that a buyer came and we were told in a city council meeting that the buyers left with, they were upset, they're gonna never come to Vader because of the way they were treated by our city employees. Well, I actually have the letter that was written by that individual and no time did that individual ever report in her official letter to me, the mayor, of any negative influence by our city employees. And the interesting thing is that a week and a half, two weeks ago, a buyer came and just bought the property next to the property of this person and now they've submitted a permit to build a house there. So, and we've done an analysis of people walking into the city hall and we've had a goodly number of people coming to the city hall asking about the properties for sale in the city. And we just had a property sell yesterday in the city with people who are interested in buying and building a house on it. So I just had to get it out there. The city of Vader has dealt with negativity for ten long years that I've been the mayor. And I don't know if it's something in the water or if people like to get a feeling of everything discontent and negativity about this city, but I'm on my soapbox here because I see progress developing in this community. And I was very, very shocked and disappointed when one individual came and told us that our permit fees were too expensive because of our city inspector. And that individual in a public meeting said that that person was too expensive, was driving away business, and the city of Windlock had approached them and wouldn't even hire them because they were too expensive. Now, I don't know if that individual knew the truth or not, or whether the individual was just lying, but the fact of the matter is the city of Windlock hired our city inspector finding that that was the most inexpensive engineer that they had encountered in their advertising efforts. So then the thing that really got me set off yesterday was in the newspaper, an article that was written by an individual, you can read it if you'd like to, in which they wrote two sentences involving this group, volunteers, forty-seven people have come.
Excuse me for, I gotta go outside.
Thank you. Forty-seven residents of this community and friends outside the community have come together for three different meetings, none of which were in secret, all of which were open to the public inviting residents to come participate. The energy in those three meetings was extraordinary and five officials volunteered to orchestrate this new Visions of Vader group in an effort to build bridges, to bring unity to this community. And so for me, to read that one of the decisions made was only officers will attend future secret meetings. I don't know specifically how that, because the writer of this wasn't even at any of the two subsequent meetings. None of them were secret. I was at all of them. I was so impressed with the energy of the volunteers in our community who were trying to develop and create energy and positivity in this community. So I'm going to find out who felt it was appropriate to inform the author of this article that only officers will attend future secret meetings. This is such an aura of negativity and frankly, I'm tired of it as a mayor and I think that I'm going to do whatever is necessary to get the truth out there. People can say these hateful things for whatever arrogant or ignorant or contentious objectives they may have, but we're going to counter it with the truth, with the facts. So I'm very proud of Vader. I'm very proud of the city council. I'm very proud of the forty-seven people who showed up to throw energy towards this Visions of Vader group. I couldn't be more proud of them and I'm going to stand by them, support them. And for every negative voice, I know there's three positive voices, that we will support with the truth and the facts. So there, thank you. I had that bully pulpit. As the mayor, I have a right to articulate that, just as these other individuals have the hateful sarcastic right to say what they feel is true, but when it's not, it'll be covered. So with that, we'll proceed and the city council members now have an opportunity to share any thoughts you might have for the council reports.
I had a member of the community approach me with the urge to find some volunteerism for the stray cat population. She's in contact with the Northwest Bay and Neuter Center in Tacoma, I believe it is. And they actually have a center, or a shuttle that picks them up in Chehalis once a month, so she's looking for volunteers for transport. They let people borrow cat-catching devices and it's a, it's a, it's a neuter and return program, so they come back, but at least they wouldn't be propagated anymore, so. Anyway, if anybody's interested, get with me on, I'll give you some information.
Does any of this come from my wife?
No.
Okay, because she's doing a lot of stuff already with that organization.
I'll get her in contact with this person, with something going.
Now, you're aware that we do have some funds still available.
Good, because it does cost $10 a cat, so.
That is a bargain.
I think it's a bargain also, so.
Wow. How much money do you think we still have in that fund?
I don't think we've spent any of it this year that I can think of.
We had a dog or two, I think that we allocated funds for, but the majority of it, there was $500.
Yeah.
That's a lot of cats.
That is a lot of cats. So, it'd be a very positive thing.
Right, okay.
All right, well, that's good news. More good news.
Good.
Then with that, let's proceed with our agenda approval for tonight's meeting.
Did you miss one, Mayor?
Did I? Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda for 6/2, 2017.
Okay, compared to Mr. Daley's motion to approve the city council meeting agenda as written for tonight's date.
Secuted.
Secuted by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, that motion is carried. Now the minutes approval for our previous city council meeting.
I made a motion, we approved the minutes for the city council meeting on 6/8/17.
Okay, Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Voucher approvals for June.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. First of June, an amount of $43,483.32. The end of June 2017, the amount of $21,953.08, for a total for June of 2017 of $65,436.40.
Okay, and Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures in the totals he noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
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 If there are any opposed, motion is carried. Well, all right, then now it's our opportunity to hear a special report from our Washington State Department of Transportation representative, Mr. Chuck Mead, who's here with us. He'd like you to take the podium.
Great. Ken, thanks for giving us the opportunity, time to speak with you, everyone from the community that decided to participate in, for our SR506 Lackamas Bridge replacement project. We came here, we wanted to talk about replacing that bridge and more specifically about what our plan is to stage the construction of that bridge. So again, my name's Chuck Mead and I work out of the department, I work for the Department of Transportation out of the Chehalis office, and my colleague Dave Lawson is gonna speak to that project for a second, so I'll give him the reins. Dave, did you have something you want me to pass out real fast?
There's flyers there that can blow up.
I got one question before you start. How old is that bridge?
It was built in 1951.
It seems like it's never been done since I came here in 54.
Well, in 1951.
Fifty-one, yes. Fifty-nine, sixty-six years ago.
Fifty-nine?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
There you go. Oh, boy.
Yes, it is.
Not in 1951.
So my name's David Lawson. I work at the Chehalis office with Chuck. I'm a transportation engineer and I have been tasked with being the lead designer on replacing the Lackamas Creek Bridge. The bridge is located about halfway from Vader to I-5 at mile post eight, and the creek comes from the town of Lackamas actually and flows across under I-5 and enters into the Calas River south of SR506. And I had a presentation all ready to go to show you guys, and I have some technical difficulties, so bear with me. So, project overview, like I said, the bridge was constructed in 1951. The original bridge, to reside in about the middle of the valley there, and it was a small short bridge that was down low, and they took that bridge out in 1951, built the approach bill and moved the wood trestle bridge to the west, and it's considerably higher in a larger span than the original bridge. They did a channel realignment to best fit the new structure, so they actually moved the creek up to the west on the west side of the valley. Right now, it is structurally efficient and functionally awesome, so our office has been tasked with replacing it. It's ranked 13th on the statewide replacement list, so that gives you an idea of the area that you could replace. There's been weight restrictions on it since 2010. Most of the oversized loads are used in 505 and south military to access the route. Our bridge replacement is scheduled to begin in spring of 2019.
Did you say that's with the start?
Yes. So February 2017, we completed an initial survey of the area. We totaled the stream and all of the existing roadway and the existing bridge. We did hydraulic modeling, which is looking at the way water would flow through under a flood event to ensure that the structure that we build is at the right height and the right span width to allow water to pass. The modeling actually was favorable for us. It told us that the bridge could be built in the exact same location at the same elevation and with the same span width, so we, we don't have to raise it up to pass flood events under the structure. So that kind of prompted us to look at, looking into a detour option, primarily because when you build a new bridge, if you build one off to the side, you have to do a realignment to accomplish that, if you want to try to keep the bridge that's functioning open. That increases our footprint and a lot of our impacts to not only adjacent property owners, but wetlands that we identify. We also looked at the potential of putting in a detour bridge that would be next to it temporarily. The other problem with that is. The other problem with that is the bridge that you build temporarily, if you have it over an entire construction season, it requires you to put in the same size span and the same height. So it's very expensive, upwards of a million dollars, to put in a temporary structure next to the bridge. So, essentially, the benefits of keeping our footprint reduced is that for stormwater requirements, we, we will be able to build a bridge without putting in detention ponds. And also, like, collecting stormwater because of our project areas small. It reduces the impacts to the environment, the riparian zones that are north and south of the bridge. We have wetlands that are identified on all four quadrants, so north and south on both sides of the creek. It reduces impacts to adjacent property owners. We won't have to buy property for ponds, you know, stormwater ponds. It reduces our construction costs because we can build the bridge in place and we don't have, you know, the fill and all the temporary construction for, you know, like, an adjacent bridge to span the river. And then the construction time, we estimated that we could do it in a season. Whereas if we were to put in a secondary bridge, it would go into a multiple-year contract or go into two years or two seasons. And that's mainly because of fish windows that you have to deal with for not only removing the bridge that's there, but also installing a new structure. What we did is, we looked at a potential detour route if the 506 state route is closed. And I talked to Tim Fife of the Lewis County Public Works Department. And essentially, South Military Road was our option for a detour route. Although there are quite a few routes that, you know, folks take to get to I-5 or to go south or to go north, we just want to have one road use agreement with the county. So the official signed detour would be 505 to South Military Road. And that would be what would be signed on I-5 and, you know, the freeway and the local roads that come into Vader. So, we did an evaluation on the detour impacts. The first thing that we, we did is we contacted the student transportation services. I talked to Castle Rock, Wimlock, and Swirledale. And it was mainly to ensure that bus routes weren't interrupted. And the only one that had a conflict was Castle Rock. And there was a special needs student that evidently gets picked up two times, or is two, two times that it travels through 506. The transportation supervisors said that they didn't even know if it would still be needed or necessary in 2019 and the, that they could work around it if it was closed. I also contacted the medical emergency response folks. I talked to the dispatch centers, and I talked to Toledo One, which is a medical unit out of Toledo. And it's primarily to coordinate how medical services would access the area if the route is in a closed status. And it didn't sound like it was too big of a problem because there's some alternate routes, like Telegraph Road, Andrews Prairie Road, and, you know, other access points. Fire response and medical needs, I believe, come out of this fire district 20. And the Toledo is the medic one, is for advanced life support, so they're not always called. And then I talked to Lewis County sheriffs and the Calas County sheriffs, because I'm working with them, to make sure dispatch ensures, I guess, tells their folks what routes they need to take if they're responding to this area. And then I talked to you about the Lewis County Road Division, so. The detour benefits, it, it reduces our traffic control costs. It's essentially a detour. Traffic control would set it up, and it would be functioning, and there wouldn't be traffic control necessary to get people through the project area. Evaluating that, when you drive through a project, it can take upwards of 20 minutes in delay time. So, if you were to drive through the project, a flagger could stop you and hold you for 20 minutes before allowing the traveler to, you know, to go through. So, for us, we don't have to pay flaggers or anybody because it's just a detour to establish. It gives us an adequate staging area because the highway would allow the contractor to set up on the highway, probably east of the bridge. You know, we wouldn't have to try to build something or create something else in the wetland areas. It minimizes our project footprint, you know, fills, everything's right on top of the road. Minimizes our environmental impacts. We don't have to put fills in the wetland like I was talking about. And primarily, the project schedule would be our biggest benefit, would be the one year instead of two, or minimal seasons. I wanted to back up because on a display, you can't see the time, but I timed all the routes and drove them with a stopwatch. And when I leave I-5 on the 505 highway exit and drive down South Military Road, it was a 10-minute trip at approximately seven miles. The I-5 route to 506 to the same location, South Military Road, is the same seven miles, and it was seven minutes. So it was a three-minute difference in time between taking 506 versus the alternate route. And then I did drive coming from south to north. I took the Toledo highway and then came Drews Prairie to Telegraph Road, and that time was 12 minutes at six and a half miles. It's just a little longer that way. But hopefully, a lot of folks use the West Side Highway or alternate routes that are available. Ahead of construction, we plan to engage the local media, probably publish it in the town prior. We'd send out mail informational flyers like the ones that you have. And we do that prior to construction in 2019. And then during construction, we'll have a website, and it'll have all the construction updates and general project information available on the website. So people can keep tabs on where we're at in the schedule and how we're progressing. So, hopefully, I explained everything to you well enough to understand. But do you have any questions or comments regarding the proposal?
Before we fill the questions real fast, I wanted to stress one message, is that the benefit of a detour allows us to build the project in one year. If we were to build a temporary bridge, it would extend the project out to two years. And us building that temporary bridge would involve a lot of onsite traffic control, which, like Dave was explaining, you could be sitting and waiting for contractors to unload girders, unload material, move, move earth around for up to 20 minutes, every direction, every time you approach our site. So, and that could be for up to two years. So the detour, we felt, was probably the most prudent option for, for the public. Because really, it is, it's very reliable. You know that you, you just have an extra 10 or 12 minutes added on your trip, and it's only for a year. So we felt that there were really key factors to deciding us supporting a detour route. So, thanks, Dave.
I have a question. I live on South Military Road, so I come up out of Vader and turn up that hill to go up South Military Road every day. And I'm just concerned about the, all the logging trucks. Because we have a lot of logging trucks that head that same route to the freeway. How are they going to make that turn and get up that hill with those huge, heavy loads?
They'll, they'll probably go Vader where it log or something. See, we're hopeful that there's a lot of dispersal with traffic. Our ADT is 1,900, which is the average daily trip of vehicles that travel 506. So, not everybody's going north, and not everybody's going south, and not everybody's trying to go to the freeway. So, when you see dispersal, you're going to probably see maybe a third of that traffic specifically, like on the detour. And we, like I said, since 2010, there's been a weight restriction on the bridge. So when you drive up South Military Road, you will encounter an oversized load, which is, you know, heavy, limited transport, because that's their alternate route that they've been taking, you know, you know, being restricted on the bridge with the weight.
Do you know what the weight limit is on the bridge?
I don't know. It's not restricted to log trucks, so it's, it's heavy loads.
Mr. Parsons, do you have something you'd like to ask or say?
Jill just asked it right as I was getting ready to. What was the weight limit for the bridge?
I could find that out.
Good.
And will that change with the new bridge, I suppose?
I actually should have gone into that. Our, our plan is to, like I said, put the same span bridge in at the same road elevation. But it'll be a concrete bridge structure, clear span, which means there'll be no piers underneath except for the, you know, the piers at the end. And the deck will be concrete, two 11 and a half foot lanes and then two four foot shoulders, so.
So it'll be a little wider?
Yeah, it'll be definitely.
And there'll be no weight restrictions?
Correct.
All right. Well.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Wonderful. Lost in light.
Ken, while I have, while I'm here, I'd like to just let you guys know, you guys have probably seen some of the signs around town. We are going to be coming through. Our contractor, Grant Construction, is going to be coming through and chip seal on the 506. They plan to begin on Wednesday or Thursday, depending on how some work in Pappy goes. So this next Wednesday, Thursday, they're going to be in town chipping. And what that'll look like, at least what the traffic control will look like, is they'll have a single lane closure, and we'll have a pilot car that'll be taking you around the world. It really should take two days, I think, to chip seal the route. Then they're going to have some temporary striping. They usually look like cards that come up out of the roadway on the center line that are reflected. So, they, they usually pop pretty good, and it's pretty easy to see. So the chips will be there. It takes about a week, I think, give or take, a few days to cure. And then, depending on how the rock sits and seeps into the oil, they'll come through and fog seal it. We typically do fog seal, but we don't have to. And that gives a nice, a nice even black coating on the chips and kind of holds them down a little bit better. Then we'll do the permanent striping. So again, it's BST starting next week, Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, two days of BSTing. We should be back, it wouldn't be 4th of July week, but the week after, to do the fog seal and the final striping.
Thanks, sir.
I don't know what's ended, my understanding. I'm assuming that they'll probably pull from the I-5 side and head to, head west.
Well, that's what I would refer to as progress.
I have one question. When's this bridge come up to be? I worked for M.J. Hughes. I built bridges for a living. And I didn't see it in the office.
No, no, 2019.
Yeah, it's a long ways down the road. We're just getting into our preliminary design.
Yeah, it's not every day that I see a bridge being built back down the street from my house.
So, Dave, what day, what date is the tentative add date?
I'm pretty sure Tom wanted to get it fairly early because of the fish window.
I thought it was December 2018 or January 2019. The contract should be on that.
It's early because our fish window.
Yeah, you guys got it narrowed.
You have to hit it or else you miss the, the season to pull that old bridge out.
Yeah.
So it's not too late to submit a bid?
No, it's not. We, we, we worked for M.J. Hughes. We built bridges all the time. We had a card for it too, so. And it wouldn't be that hard.
I'd say that would be good.
Pretty high for me, yeah.
For sure. Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes.
Came up with a card for you. I'm expecting one in case.
We'll pass these up to the council.
Thank you.
You betcha. Well, I'm good. Improvements happen.
Yeah, that, that'll give us less to talk about, almost on a daily basis. Quite a topic of sore conversation right there, that.
Two years now, they ought to have everything logged off.
Be, I'll take bets up in that pocket.
All righty, well, then with that special report, let's proceed with our next agenda item, which is public comment.
Okay. Looks like David and Chuck signed up on that, so they don't want to be on, but we have four others.
Four others.
First in line is Harold Hinkle.
There. Harold? You betcha.
What I want to do is see if I can get an extension on 724 Parker Road cleanup that I'm supposed to do.
Oh, sure.
I, I had open heart surgery done 10 months ago, and I haven't been able to do very much. And right now, they got me not to lift 10 pounds or heavier. Because they gotta cut this back open because I fell and broke it, the breast bone. And I, I don't have a pickup right now. I'll get it in, in August. I just need more time to repair it.
Well, Harold, speaking for the council, I, I know that this is a public comment, but that would could easily be handled through City Hall.
It needs, it needs to be handled through City Hall yet.
Yeah, it's probably not the forum to have.
Okay, I just thought maybe you guys had something to do.
No.
Okay.
But, but we'll need a, a letter from you requesting that as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yep.
And then that'll put it in action.
Get it there and it'll start a new ocean.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Next is Cindy Radcliffe.
Okay.
Excuse me. Cindy Radcliffe, 1027th Street. It is disheartening that the mayor chose to chastise or question the loyalty of people that have disagreed with the city's fees and charges. And before I made my comments in the last few city council meetings, I went to several other jurisdictions to find out if the fees that we were paying were in line. So, and they were not, by the way. I went to Lewis County, I went to Calas County, I went to other jurisdictions as well, and we were paying more here. And so, it's, it's disturbing that he would challenge anyone's loyalty to this city simply because they disagree. He may think that that's negative, that I'm bringing up negative things and saying, well, they're charging too much. But don't ever question my loyalty to the city. I was raised here. I've been here longer than you've been here. I came back to this city. I, we're building a home here. And so, anyone else that wants to disagree with the city, please feel free to, because that's what the nation is built on. And I certainly hope that those people that have inquired about property buy it here. And I hope they, they don't have the same experiences that the other people I mentioned have had in the city. And maybe, just maybe, that bringing it to the light and talking about negative experiences has changed behavior. I'm hoping that's the case, and I hope they actually do buy. That helps all of us here. It helps our property values. And, but I also hope that they don't have the same experience. And as for the first thing about Vader 4th of July event, the mayor talked about marketing efforts for the 4th of July. Other than the flyers, I haven't seen any other marketing efforts. It's not even on the city of Vader website. And just a suggestion, maybe you could put it on there. It could possibly go right where it says Happy New Year. Or that there's a vacancy on the city council, because I don't believe there's a vacancy still. So just maybe, it takes five minutes. I brought this up a month ago. I know it's a struggle, but maybe you could update the website, because people do use MMT a lot more than they ever do look at flyers. There's three flyers in the hallway. I bet none of you even know what they say. Thank you.
Wonderful. That was within your three-minute time constraint. That's fantastic. I, just, we're not gonna turn public comment into a interrogative debate. But I don't know if our long-term resident has been reading the Vader View, but that's a concerted effort to, every week, it's in the town prior. A, a very, I think, heartfelt invitation.
I agree, there's nothing on the prospect.
So you, you missed it then. Well, stay tuned, more is coming. The flyers have been distributed, I thought it were very well made. And did you see the marketing along the school fence line?
I did see that.
Oh, well, fantastic. And we will probably put the, the banner across the five oh six. And I, I would just have to call to your attention that I never mentioned a thing about the, the permit rates, which you find are excessive, the fees and so forth. But you remember in that conversation, we, the council, concurred that they were lower than they should be. And we cannot, if you make the mistake of comparing other cities' permit fees, you're comparing an apple with an orange. Because we don't have the same businesses as other communities that can generate revenue through their state sales taxes. So the permit fees is one of the few areas that we haven't, right now, we're not making enough off our fees to pay for the cost. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. For you to claim that we're excessively expensive for other cities is, obviously, doesn't reflect well in your experience in city management. And with regard to defending our city employees, impugning our city employees as a cause for somebody to not want to build a home in the City of Vader is your opinion, is not necessarily base in fact. So with that, I'm just responding to your comments, it's not gonna be interrogative thing in a public meeting. But as the mayor, and you're impugning our efforts, you're entitled to say whatever it is you feel like, but we're gonna counter it with the truth and the facts.
Just saying it doesn't make it true.
The three, well, exactly, just as we noted earlier. But when we found out what you said, we have it as a matter of public record on our minutes, that on one occasion, you said the individual we hired as our city building inspector was too expansive and was not hired by the City of Vader, or Winlock, whether you knew that as a fact or not.
I talked to Stormy today, they have not hired him as a building permit inspector. I talked to her today, they have not hired him yet.
He's going to be hired, so talk to their mayor.
You don't know that.
We'll talk to their mayor.
You honestly don't know that.
Okay, enough. We have, so, but thank you, and thank you, so, for being a cause of direction. Well, the mayor is the moderator of the city council meeting, so we'll proceed now with our next public comment. Forgive me for my indulgence.
Scott Gross.
I can follow that. I'm glad you're here, fine, I've been, I've come to a few leading meetings here in the year.
Might need to draw your weapon.
There's a grave concern at the stop sign at Eighth and D Street. Your officers tend to sit right there in the parking lot, which makes them stop, but doesn't catch anybody that's not stopping. So I was wondering if there's a way that the sheriff's department can do some sort of special enforcement on that stop sign. People run it blatantly, multiple times a day, they watch, kids ride their bicycles. It's, it's, it's something that needs to be addressed. I know I brought it up to the council's attention about the speed limit possibly coming down because of the school zone.
We want revenue, Dr. Aris.
Well, that's the other part too. I mean, the, the number, honestly, the number of people that see, run that stop sign every day, it's, it's intense. So across from the school building on the corner, which council member Parsons, daughter and son-in-law reside there, they are on board with your department sitting on the alley behind there to watch that stop sign, because it's a good vantage point where people can't really see you until it's too late. You're welcome to come and stand in my yard and watch too, because it's, it's quite exciting. Along those same lines with the Fourth of July event, they're talking about closing D Street. So I'm assuming that's maybe at five oh six through Eighth Street only?
That's the plan.
Is there any sort of traffic control that's going to be happening at that intersection, so when people come down the hill and are trying to slow down to, to turn left there? And then, and then Eighth Street will be real all the way through. And then where do we find flyers for the Fourth of July event? So that, I'm not posting it in my business.
Flyers are at the City Hall?
There may be an extra one on the counter over there, if not, we can get, get it from.
I didn't see any extras over there. Okay. And just a, a comment with regards to the, the fees on the permits. I, I concur that with the city and the number of properties that are here, that it's minimal for the amount of permits that the city would be able to get applications for. Where if you're looking at Lewis County or Calis County, they're gonna come and see the whole county and the people that reside there. So they have, have more revenue that they can go after, where us as a small city, we don't really have, have those means. So as, as the mayor had said, it, it, we gotta make the money up somewhere. And, you know, it's either it's gonna be a property taxes, or it's going to be in assessments, or.
Well, they raise the property taxes.
Okay, excuse me, but this is not a debate.
And that's just the joys of living in a small town, money's gotta come from somewhere. And if you don't have a large community to draw from, there's gonna be more of a draw from those within the community.
Thank you, your three minutes conclude?
Can I ask a question about the stop sign? The stop sign?
Would you care to have a question regarding?
Sure. The stop sign at Eighth and D, is, it, I haven't been here very long, we just bought property here. I noticed the big orange flags there, is that a new stop sign? How long has it been there?
It's a new stop sign, it's a old place, it used to be there for a long time, then they took the school out. And we, I was on the park board at the time, and we thought that it was more of a nuisance than anything. And after taking it out, it became a speed zone. So residents on the street, myself included, decided to ask the council to put it back in, so.
And how long's it been there? How long's it been back there?
Not too much, probably.
Three months?
A lot longer than that.
Longer than that?
A lot longer than that, at least I would say closer to six months.
I think it was December that they went in.
A lot of while, I mean, there's, and there's traffic revision signs on each end of the block, so I mean, there's still not one ticket.
You'll make that. Okay, all right, well, good, thank you.
Okay, one more, Judy Costello. I'm not sure I wanna do this.
Oh, yep.
Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street. Mine is on item number three. As a candidate for city council, I disagree with changing the hours for the city council meeting to an A M. It will detour a lot of people from being able to come to it to work. If I'm on the council, I'm not quite sure how I'll get away from work to come to an A M meeting. I know Jason struggled for a while just getting his regulated for the evening. Joe works, Mike works, so I just wanted to make a point that that was not really a good thing, changing it, because then the rest of us all can't be there. So just kinda, just leave it up. And I don't wanna stir the pot, but I think I should probably say this. Not much time, but I've got a lot left.
Yeah, you've got plenty of time.
I was at that meeting that Mr. Mayor was so upset about. And we were asked to leave. And I wanna make it very clear and tell everyone that we were not invited to that meeting. And we are not invited to future meetings of the board. And I just kinda wanna get that out there. I took that as offensive, that we came to the meeting, as this was supposed to be a community forum focus group, where we all threw our ideas out on the table, Winlock and Toledo never did it this way. We met all the time.
That's not what that meeting was for, that meeting was for the.
Sorry, my, my turn.
Yeah, this is public, Mike. Hold that thought, Mike, because this is sort of three minutes of public.
And the Winlock, and I was on the Winlock group, we met, and every time we met, our five people were there, cause I was the treasurer. And we talked among ourselves about everything, not five people that raised their hand and said they wanted to be on the meeting, who go off to someone's home or City Hall, and the rest of us are not invited to, to, to sit there. And you were there, Mayor Kim, and some other people in the group. So for Claudia to come up with that comment, maybe the word secret wasn't the right thing, but a private meeting would have fit the picture better. So maybe it was terminology there, but I believe everything else in the article was correct. But, but not the secret part. So I'm, I'm just saying that we were asked, we, we thought we all were gonna have to leave that meeting that very day. And then it was decided that we could be lurkers. We called ourselves lurkers and we got to sit through that meeting, but they put it in their bylaws, I believe, that we would not be able to come to any more of their board meetings. So I needed to clear that up, so everyone knows. So how was that for, how was that for not stirring the pot?
Okay, that's three, three minutes.
I need to give a response to that on behalf of the organization.
Yes, I tell you, but Mr. Parsons is already, I think.
Go ahead, Mike.
Now, now, everybody be nice.
Well, we will try.
Okay, well, it's a hundred and five degrees here, so I'm already hot and bothered.
Sorry.
There is no meeting like this, that you don't have the board get together and discuss the bylaws and things like that without everyone else, because those meetings would turn into four or five hour meetings. And if we're gonna have four or five hour meetings, then I don't want my wife spending that much time on four or five hour meetings. A meeting like that is set so that the five people, did you volunteer to be on the board? I don't think that you did, did anybody else? No, there was five people that volunteered, there were five people that were called, and there were five people that were supposed to be at that meeting. And to mix all these different chiefs and Indians in there, or however you wanna say it, is just ridiculous to, so they need to get in together, sit down, have their meeting, and then invite everybody else to let them know, okay, here are the bylaws, here's how everything is structured. Now, what would you like to, us to try to take care of?
Okay, thank you, Mike, appreciate that, there's others who have begged to be heard. Mr. Gross is a member of, one of the officials on that board, if you want to call it that. Would you like to give your perspective, I can't read.
We met, as Mike just said, to get all of the.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I'd like to be able to see when you talk.
The meeting was for the board of directors to go over the paperwork part of things that needed to be done, the bylaws that, that were decided upon. And then also the incorporation documentation, that, that's basically what we went over today, we had a meeting. So the plan is that we are incorporating visions, and we have two different things, visions of Vader and visions for Vader. And we believe that it came down visions for Vader, which I, I believe was in the paper, but you were saying visions of Vader.
Yeah.
But, so we, we determined visions for Vader because it's a, a future thing, where visions of Vader would be a more today thing. So the next meeting that we will be having is on the third of July. And it is going to be a meeting of me saying, I have gone and done the secretary of state registration, and now we are ready to do the five oh one C three information. And then we are going to then have a big meeting with everybody, and then let them all know the bylaws that they've been written, the incorporation. And then we are going to then take suggestions from the community for what kind of projects they would like to see happen for the city. And then once we have that, then we're gonna do a vote from the people on the top ones, and whatever ends up being the, the top one will be what the committee will then work towards getting completed. So the behind the scenes things and getting things formulated and put together are done with the board members. Anything that happens for the organization and with the group is going to be the community. And something that, that did come up, and I'll, I'll just tell everybody, is that they said, oh, well, we should have a couple of ideas on the board already. I said, no, I said, this is community involvement, it's about what the community wants. If you think something needs to be on the board, then you raise your hand with everybody else and you put it on there. So there's no predisposition from anybody on anything. So then that way, it's, to me, it's a fair, a fair vote for, for the city. Thanks for that.
Well said, thank you.
And I, I was not really pleased with the secret meeting comment either, because there has never been a secret about anything ever. Everybody's known, otherwise, people wouldn't have shown up.
Exactly. I was at that, the, the secret meeting, I was one of the lurkers, and I was not invited to leave. And it was made very clear to me, when I stood up and took the names of the volunteers, and our two individuals present here weren't, didn't get my attention and get to your names, we needed five people, and those were the only five people.
One more quick thing, it wasn't an official meeting, have a community center, because we didn't even have, who knew which board member was gonna be what at that point in time. So we had our first official meeting today, where we called roll and had orders.
At, at no time has it ever been said that individuals couldn't come and watch, but to participate actively is, where did you hear that?
Mayor Kim, were you at the same meeting we ran?
Well, is that a rhetorical facetious question?
Yes.
Of course I would.
He said that, that the board meeting was just for the five more members.
It's only for those guys.
Yeah, but nobody ever said that somebody couldn't come and just sit and watch.
The state didn't say that, and they put it in their bylaws, that's what, that's.
Our, our board meetings are for the board members.
Then, I did miss that part. But nonetheless.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna linger with this subject, I know, I know everybody's got things to do, but it was, it's just that this is.
But nonetheless, I agree that when you have an organization such as this, this was a draft, yes, thank you. This was a, a draft, a set of bylaws. This group was, purpose was to meet, to formulate the verbiage in the bylaws, at which time it would go before the, the main committee, the group as a whole. So at no time should it, it's not a secret meeting. Maybe the group felt comfortable not having lurkers, me being one of them, cause I didn't come to today's meeting either. Because they should have that right freedom and then take whatever they do before the group. Now, let's go with Mr. Wilson.
Number one, if this committee was approved anywhere, any way or means by the city council.
It's not had anything to do with the city. These are just good-hearted residents who are starting this five oh one C three, they're just trying to do it. Isn't this just so typical of our committee?
Dictatorship, and this isn't, this city isn't a dictator, period. And I disagree with the, the meetings that you have, people like this group, and then they won't let nobody else come in and speak. This is ridiculous, period.
But somehow, I think you just missed the whole concept.
They're trying to run the city down to a dictatorship.
Well, it's a dictatorship by a.
Well, you weren't even born when the drum war wore two of them on.
Well, I won't address that comment, I won't give it the dignity.
Dictatorship, the only thing we're getting together, that, that group is getting together to do is do things for the city. Organize things for the city, and if you think that's a dictatorship, are you kidding me?
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't, didn't get it out.
You didn't hear it, so I know that emotions are, are pretty high.
Just in response to Mr. Parsons' comment about four or five hours, there were five or six people that, there that were not on the board. It did not take five or six hours, it was maybe a little over an hour. They got things done, the, they went through their motions, and so having those other five people there was not a deterrent. And, and his wife would not have spent way too many hours away from the home or whatever. So it, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna spend too much time just because other people are there. And a strong leader will be able to control the crowd and keep things organized and moving forward.
Well, I.
This, this crowd that we're dealing with, Cindy, is, is already kept this city council meeting all the way into seven eleven. And we're past the hour and we're just getting to our agenda points, and it's because.
What if you run for office for, you don't, can't come to the meetings?
Okay, Mr. Wilson there. Okay, Mr. Wilson there. Obviously, you may be, but you're not the only one. Obviously, we have growing pains, and obviously, this city has been dealing with division and contention for, since you were mayor, probably mainly when you were twenty or so, but.
Thirty-three years ago.
Yeah, so we're trying to overcome that as best as possible, obviously, and I know that, that none of us is perfect. We know that we're, well, well, maybe one. Not perfectly humble, but that's okay. I know for a fact that when I stood up, it was not my thing, this is not the mayor, because the mayor can contribute to contention, I'm very good at that, and obviously, there are groups who would find contention even if I weren't the mayor. But, so the mayor is not a dictator with regard to this. This is a group of good-hearted individuals who are trying to make positive things happen in this community. If, the birthing process of these organizations is always the hardest, but I kind of agree with Mr. Parsons. If we stood up in the group meeting and we asked for volunteers to form the five members of the draft bylaws, we have to start with something, and, yes, and we had volunteers, I stood up there, I didn't hear either of the two contending individuals here sign up, maybe I missed that too, but I heard some after the meeting volunteer to be alternates of some sort, but it was the group that was there and we waited for you, and I didn't see it. So what I did see is a lurker, and maybe I missed it at the outset, was that the lurkers were exerting a lot of influence on the five individuals, and I'm getting a nod of affirmation from a member of the officials. And I have to agree with that, it was an impact, and just because it didn't happen for five hours at that meeting, doesn't mean it couldn't go longer than is comfortable for those volunteers. They're all, they're all just good-hearted people for the sake. Once they get their job done, then they can go back to the group and you can make your observations known. But I think the overarching thing is that no time was it ever inferred that they were secret meetings. However, that word emerged as negative contentious, and this group doesn't need that, and ultimately, the greater good of the community is going to be served by it, I would hope that we would embrace that, for heaven's sakes, that past our pettiness and be team players. Okay, now you're, I'm upsetting you because you don't want to, so let's proceed, we will move ahead. Mike, I know you're, you're being patient, and I acknowledge that.
Okay.
Yes, I won't say that.
City business.
We're done with that comment. They're done.
Number one, we'll do this quickly, council to discuss preliminary proposal for two thousand eighteen and nineteen Lewis County Sheriff and District Court Services. I can brief the council quickly here, that we met with Rob Snouse, Lewis County Sheriff, Les Rethwell, their Chief Financial Officer, and another individual, and, oh, yes, we met primarily with Jonathan Meyer, the Lewis County Prosecuting Attorney, who oversees the District Court Services for Lewis County Sheriff's Department and other small cities in Lewis County. And as you know, every year, they revisit the contract that we have with them, and they've submitted just a very informal draft contract proposal for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And we don't have an official contract for you to look at, but it's in, it's going to be forthcoming. And I told them that I would share with the council what documentation they do have, and you have in your packet this statement from Jonathan Meyer.
I, I've read, read this, and I think it's a pretty good, for, for us to keep on going with the Lewis County Sheriff, and after being involved myself with a lot of money and everything else with our own police force.
Yeah.
I tell you, it's expensive.
It is.
Very expensive, and I, I kind of like their proposal and.
Yeah, this is only a partial, this has to do, one of the proposals that they're submitting with, with some teeth in it, not teeth, but it's one of their expectations, is that if we continue with them, that they're going to want us to join the, the district court that the Sheriff's Department uses for prosecutive actions, infractions of criminal cases. And Mr. Meyer's document only refers to that portion of their proposed contract. So, but I agree with your observations that we are, I can tell the council that they are, have come up with a tentative cost assessment, impact that this would have on the city, and it's not much more than what we're paying now. But I prefer not to address that to a specific amount until you've seen the, the draft contract. That makes sense?
Yes, it'd be nice to take and have our own police force, but we just can't afford a small city anymore.
Right.
That's my opinion of it. And also reading the paper like that, I believe it was in the paper yesterday or something that, maybe it was council, yeah, Sheriff Hamilton, telling about losing so many officers.
Yeah, it's hard even for communities that size to keep. But, no, see, we agree on something, that's wonderful. But as for the council to decide, not the mayor, so, but I echo your sentiments. Now, so, oh, but they did indicate that if the council were interested, they would like to come and submit an official proposal in person if you'd like them to. That includes Rob Snouse, Les Rethwell, and Jonathan Meyer himself, so it's that important to them.
No, my personal opinion is, I, I don't know how we could do any better, and so I've been making a motion that we.
Well, not ready for a motion.
I've got to wait.
You've got to wait until you hear the, the contract proposal.
That we bring back to the council.
Oh, okay, I've heard a motion to bring the topic up in the future with, no, I didn't hear that much. So any other thoughts or observations from the council? Do you like us to set in motion a presentation by Lewis County officials at some point in the near future?
That'd be great.
Okay, okay, then I, Mike, are you okay with setting up a presentation from Lewis County?
Yes, I think the Lewis County Sheriff's Department is a phenomenal force.
Okay, all righty, then with that, having got agreed, I don't think we need a motion to set that in motion, consider it done. All right, then, let's proceed with item number two, council to discuss stormwater drainage maintenance. I think this topic felt it would be appropriate to put on the agenda because we've got ongoing drainage challenges as far as our ditches, keeping them clean, weed-free and unblocked.
Well, I, I know that some of the different places he's done a good job redoning the drainage, because many years ago, before I even came into public here, they was having problems with the old drainage system in town, that original, so now we've got a lot of it done, and we've got a little bit more to do ourselves too, like by the post office, and that, that has to be all dug up with the drainage. It's all clay tile is what it is.
Yeah, it's a challenge. Did you have a thought?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of make sure that council understood that the, what's been going on is that, is that the storm drainage system, of course, is something that the city is supposed to be maintaining, and we haven't set aside any funds in many, many years to do anything official with the storm drains. We're finding that, that some of them are getting so filled with sediment and different things that it's beyond what John can do with the tools that he has and his own abilities, and that we're to the point where we're going to have to hire somebody to come and help clean some of those out. He doesn't have a working excavator, that's a whole other issue to bring up, but somehow we, council, he's, you know, if we want to take care of our storm drains, we've got to come up with some money somehow to put something towards the storm drain so that we can keep them maintained and get them clean.
Another thing, you know, we need to do is, we need to rent one that can be power-driven so we can get our drainage system opened up for, while it's summertime, we need to get on it.
And if we could get some pipe to replace the collapsed pipes that we discovered, that I think is the essence of what we're talking about.
So I, I think what we're looking for from council is to, for council to, you guys have just recently got your last month's report, financial reports, and maybe look through that budget and see if there's somewhere that we can pull some money out of the current fund or the street fund, we can't take it out of the sewer fund because.
How about the sheriff's fund?
The sheriff's fund would work, yeah. But if there's somewhere that, that we can find, you know, some money to, to do some storm drainage work, because council will have to make that determination.
Do we have a ballpark on what?
The city don't have the.
Hold that thought.
The city don't have the equipment to take and actually do some of these drainage systems. I know a lot of them that has to be redone, but we don't have the money, we need a backup, and then you need to.
Well, and that kind of falls back into some of the, when the mayor was asking about volunteers to help work on grant stuff, that's another, there's money out there that we could possibly get some help with some of that, but we just don't have the time to do all the research, and we need help, possibly volunteers who are willing to do some research and some legwork to help us find some of that money so that we can, we can do some of that, but in any event, that's what we're looking, we got to find some money to do something, but some of them are bad enough now that they really have to be done, and we got to figure out, John can't do them, they're too long, and he doesn't have equipment to go in there and do them. We have to either rent the equipment or hire somebody to do it, and that's what we're looking for, so.
When they do A Street, they're going to have a lot of, they haven't even thought about it, I know, they got a lot of drainage and storm drains on A Street to take care of.
Well, they've thought about it, and they're contemplating how to solve some of those drainage problems, so let's make it clear that we've walked with Devin Jackson along A Street, he's got a pretty good handle on how to resolve some of the drainage issues on A Street, so. What the answers are yet, I don't know.
Basically down that part of A Street, and by the church, and across there.
No, no. It is in the, we do have a comment from the.
I didn't get, I, I came in late because I've only lived here for a week, but I deal inside of a chunk of property where I'm ten, me and my father, we have several hundred feet of drainage ditches on our property, that were extremely flooded when we came to buy the property, and says I am, I, I have the ability and the equipment to maintain my property, as long as, I don't know what the permit process, or if I have to address the city council in clearing the ditches that line Ten Street, and I made the suggestion to my boss as engineer as far as possibly digging a, a small pond, to kind of collect all the water to string on that property, because it just kind of goes out into the field and into other people's adjacent properties that, that border mine. And so I know that I'm going to be down at City Hall in regards to digging a pond, I have seven kids, so obviously I'm not going to dig a very big one, and, but we, we know that we need to clean out the ditch this summer, and there's a big ditch right through the middle of the property itself that was put there at one time, that's completely non, you know, not working. And so we, we know as property owners that, that, you know, obviously it's tiny old town, I didn't see the excavator when it came to town, that we're, we just want to be able to know whether we have to approach the city council in regards to bringing a piece of equipment in and touching the city ditch, you know, I mean, because there's trees that twist up into the road, and it's all just a trickle, and you can see where all the sediment has built up, and it's.
It's all grown trees and plants.
Sure. We want, we want to clear, we want to stay within our, on our boundary.
Yeah, I know that there are some like water lines that run near the ditches, or some sewer lines that run pretty shallow in the ditches, I don't know which ones.
Well, we, but.
That's, that's the thing, you know.
Well, we would, I would like bring the three eighty down on the low line.
No, we're not going to.
I don't like that.
Number eight.
Yeah, I've got seven, I have five helpers.
Well, your timing is remarkable, and the fact that we have it on the agenda for council attention, it could be very serendipitous, so you definitely need to come in, and we'll see just what we can do to assist in helping with that problem. And maybe in the process, we can crunch some numbers and see what equipment we might need and what it might cost either rent or acquire, and maybe review what sources of funding may be disposable to engage in this activity, what it's drawing. We kept turning that distance a bit. Okay, so you would come in and.
Yeah, we've got a lot of questions, we've, I just, I know this is totally off-topic and I'm not, not on my three minutes, but me and, me and my wife and my seven children and my family, in the, in the month that we have been in Vader, and that we have paid here and bought property here and purchased it to build a home, we have never felt a more overwhelming welcome in our lives. I don't know.
He hasn't talked to you yet.
I take exception to that, you think it's funny, but I think they're right.
I can't, I can't.
You spread the word.
I can't speak for the other people in this room, but I don't know when the last time they bought property in Clark County, or in Calz County, or Durst County, and seeing what it costs to buy a piece of property. It's, me, my wife is gainfully employed, I'm gainfully employed, my mom and dad are gainfully employed, and we had several hundred thousands of dollars to spend, and we were literally getting the door slammed in our face, and it was only by freak accident that we found this piece of property in Vader, and it's in hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop a house, a minimum of five to ten acres, and twenty-five thousand dollars to even look at the septic systems, a hundred dollars a foot for power, it was, it would be a hundred thousand dollars in some cases just to turn the lights and the water on. So to come to the city of Vader, and oh, it might be five thousand, it might be seven thousand, I was just like, who do I have to give the money to? And, and you know, it's, not some people like a small little town, but we love it here, my kids can ride the streets on the bicycles now, I don't have tweakers trying to steal my cars, I don't, you know, I mean, they have that drug problem everywhere, but what I'm getting at is that if you haven't been shopping for property lately, you might want to call your local real estate agency, because it, it's, I, I see a lot of properties in this town and a lot of choices to pick, and I, I'm not going to run on, but we, we really feel an overwhelming support in the city of Vader.
Okay, we are recording what you're saying, and we are going to dictate it in our minutes, and I challenge everybody in the sound of my voice to spread the message they have just shared with us. That would do more to uplift the spirits and create unity in this community.
I'm not stepping on anybody's toes by no means, I just know the struggle that me and my wife, in the six months we've been working, with money in our pockets has been, and people are like, well, you know, and it's been really tough, so we, we're very, you know, we're just, the community is, is tiny here, and obviously, it's no sprawling metropolis, but it, it is very welcoming, I mean, I, I sit in my chair, and my children are riding their bikes around, and I don't have any fears like I would when I, we're from Longview, and I can assure you, there's not happy places there, we came from Waschugel, and I can assure you, that's not a happy place either, so. Very nice town, we're very, very, we're thankful to be here, very happy, so thank you.
Mike, did you hear what they've just?
Yeah.
What are your names for the public?
Shoshana and Franklin McPherson.
Shoshana and Franklin McPherson, and I'm going to leave you a round of applause. Thank you for leading the faith, selecting this community.
I hear Ten Street also?
Yes.
He's number two, I have nine jobs.
So we'll get to know them, and we're going to help you as much as we can, as we have everybody else in this community.
Mayor Smith, can I just add that I am a mortgage lender, and I have one-time closed construction loans for vacant lots for stick-built and manufactured homes.
And spread the word.
And my cards are up on the wall right here, so you can.
Thanks, he's a Vader resident, looking to help our community. All right, on that very positive note, okay, now let's move to agenda item number three, which we've heard as a matter of public comment and opinion, that's what it's for. And so I personally know that the council raised this issue at our last council meeting, we said we'd put it on the agenda. I don't think anybody's made any decisions on it, but it's. but it's good to know opinions. So, I've turned over the council to engage in a conversation on the topic. And we did get feedback from our city council member, Leona, who is representing the city tonight and is going to be getting a $500 check because she's representing the city that we can use in some capacity. It goes into the general fund. So, we're grateful for her, what?
Storm drain.
Okay, okay. Something. But anyway, she, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't let you know that she is strongly opposed to changing the time to a day, an hour during the day. Because she has logistical family issues that would prevent her from participating in any other time. So, she wanted that message conveyed. So, there you have it. Now, I've turned over the council.
She said she could possibly do it a little bit earlier than 6 o'clock like we're doing now, but on the same night. But, yeah, daytime and morning is not good.
You know, I'd have to convey that I'm with her on that. I like it in the evenings. I think it makes it easier for people to come in after work. I mean, we don't get enough people here as it is, so... No, I'm a PMer myself.
Okay. Yeah, we could go from left to right if we want to. Mr. Wilson, do you have thoughts on the matter?
Do what?
Do you have any thoughts on the matter with regard to the change in council meeting day and time?
Well, I don't want to change really because there's a lot of people that work and that would like to come to meetings, and some will do and some don't. And I just don't want to disrupt the citizens. And I think we've been doing a good job by just changing the date like we did. And it gets closer to the weekend.
Okay, I think we've captured. Your thoughts, and then we'll go to Mike.
I wouldn't mind it being a little earlier personally. That's my opinion.
What is little earlier?
Four, five at the latest would be great for me, but...
So...
Or 9 o'clock at night, or at 5:00 in the morning. It'd be okay, too.
Okay. Four, five. Okay, Mr. Parsons, did you want to weigh in on the matter?
I, to me, it's, a little bit earlier would be nice. There was another council person that, that I brought this up for also. And so, I'm pretty lax on it. My schedule is pretty open when I'm in town, so...
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Leona about what time she thought would work for her.
She felt that 6:00 on Thursdays was one of the few times...
It was the best time for her.
Yeah. 5:30 would be a stretch for her. And it's a personal issue.
And then it's like, why change it for half an hour? You know, so... And then it'd be like, why change it for half an hour? Fill everybody off.
So, hey, that's why we have council discussions on it. So, you could submit a motion on the matter, or you could continue to deliberate on it.
I would like to see it. Keep it the way we are for a while until the next election. And then if they, the next people on the council, would like to change it, fine. But at the present time, I think we've got to step for the rest of the year. We've only got a few more months to go. And that's my opinion.
All right.
Would you like that in a motion part? I'd like to make a motion that we keep the meeting time at 6:00 p.m. on Thursdays, on second and or Thursday of the month until after the city council is re-elected in the fall.
Do we need a motion for something that's not going to change?
I don't know.
We don't. We don't.
Okay.
Probably don't, yeah.
You can make a motion to not discuss it anymore.
It was good practice, anyway.
He's excited.
So, well, if we don't, if it's not made in the form of a motion to make the change, then there is no action. So, is anybody inclined to make a motion of any sort?
A motion that we hit the gavel. Keep it the way it is.
I did not hear a motion, a formal motion, to make any adjustments to our current council meeting schedule. So, with that, that concludes our last official... There is this item. We will declare this council meeting closed at 7:37 p.m. And thank you all for being here.